So I have some great progress to report this evening. We have actually finalized our student advisor council for this school year. And we have had two high school meetings so far. First meeting does an introductory meeting in order to establish a connection throughout the high school members and the council in general, as well as some opinions on upcoming projects and how we see the council functioning this year. Then the meeting was a special program with Mr. Turner focusing on student voice in which different groups, discussions answered questions about student voice and how we see ourselves in Boone County. This first meeting that I mentioned, introductory meeting, we had some really great discussions on specifically going back four days, one of those I thought I would share today. And I think in general, starting with some positive impressions, I think students are very excited, very appreciative that the district is letting them learn the full capacity at school. And I think it is clear that students' mental health and productivity is improved while being at school. However, I did think it would be ignorant of me to only focus on the positives that were discussed because there have been some negatives that were discussed during these meetings, as well as me directly being the student representative. And some of those are transparency and consistency to students. Some students on the council felt that there was a lack of these things coming to students directly, communication from the board of general. And this is something that we would like worked on, as well as it become clear from talking to my peers after coming four days, that there has been some lack of support specifically for some staff. In general, I was brought attention today that there have been only two janitors working at my high school. And it is possible this is causing some oversight and sanitization as some classrooms are not only not being sanitized, but also the trash is not even being taken out. But I thought it was important that we did address these and these were taken into consideration as we move forward because I think it is a great thing that students are back in school. And students have expressed they're extremely grateful to be back in school. However, I think it's important that we do address these things that may need improvement, as well as extenuating circumstances that may not have been considered in the past for not only our students, but our teachers, as well as our staff. So I think in sum, we are extremely glad to be back in school. However, the council, as well as my peers and myself, do think it is important to continue on our current improvement and continue improving this model we currently have. Thank you.
While that in this day was yesterday, we do want to take a moment to recognize those who are present and those who may be watching that proudly wore our nation's uniform to defend our country and secure our freedoms. We enjoy the privilege of liberty and prosperity thanks to your sacrifice and the sacrifices of those that have gone before us. We are indeed grateful. Thank you.
Our next good news item, I want to recognize some retirees that are with us. Each year in the fall, Boone County Schools recognizes our retirees who have served their careers here in our school district. We appreciate your years of service to the children of our county. It is only through your hard work and your dedication, as well as the efforts of your colleagues, that our schools have been able to pursue, achieve, and maintain excellence in education. We reserve this gratitude for the following 69 retirees. For those who could not be here tonight, we will mail them their certificates. If you're here and we do not call your name, it's because we did not receive an RSVP for you, so please come forward anyway and receive your certificate. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Brady to read from our list, and we'll have someone greet them down here at the table and give you a certificate.
Carla Hall. Renee Hood. Dawn Hiddings. Terry Kendrick. Joseph Kozar. Christopher Roberts. Deborah Schroeder. Deborah Short. Minnie Tilly. And Marilyn Woods.
Is this you?
Oh, right here.
I think it would be.
Thank you very much to our retirees. It's a pleasure to have you here with us. Congratulations to you on your retirement and wish you well in your future years. Let's have a round of applause for all our retirees. Our next good news item is recognition for one of our coaches. Boone County High School cheer coach Michelle Schuster has been chosen as the Kentucky Spirit Coach of the Year by the Kentucky High School Athletic Association. The staff of the association selected her based on the strength of last year's season when her varsity competition squad went undefeated, winning the KHS double A state and regional titles in small varsity, as well as state and national titles in the UCA competition. The UCA national title was the second consecutive title for the Boone County Rebels. Congratulations, Ms. Schuster. Very well. And our final good news item is welcoming a new employee to us, someone that's returning to Boone County. We want to welcome our new human resources director, Matt Rig. Mr. Rig is coming to us from the Kenton County Schools where he worked as director of human resources there. Prior to that, he was assistant human resources director here at Boone County Schools. Now will be taking over the position held by retired HR director Phil Sheehy at the end of the month. Mr. Rig? And I believe you have a guest with you. You want to introduce your guest? Do you have any other words for the group? You're welcome.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the board, or I'd like to thank the partner and the board committees, or the recommending, and the others for second act recommendations. As Judy Garland's character of northern famous said, and the word of eyes, there's no place like home. And I'm very excited to return to home where I started my education career. And I'd like to thank you, extremely talented, most of the HR people who have not seen, thank you so much. Went forward to the work of the PO and doing great things that when I was small enough and I was first time. And I'd also like to, I know Phil's not with us this evening, but to thank Phil Sheehy. He was a mentor and trained me and really prepared me for what I've been able to do over in Kenton County. And I'd also like to publicly thank Dr. Henry Webb and the team over at Kenton County for giving me the opportunity to come over there and support them and learn. And I think with that knowledge and experience that I'll be able to bring back, I know that we're going to get to role types operation in our HR department. I look forward to the work that we're going to embark on, and I look forward to the support of the team, my family, the board, and to get started on these works soon. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Rig. Okay, thank you very much. So that brings us to item five, recommended action consent agenda. Mr. Turner.
I recommend the board approve the consent agenda items A through triple P with the treasurer's report given by Ms. Lenda Shield as presented.
Okay, I'll start it. We began the month with a cash balance of $26,810,62. We had total receipts for the month of $50,523,478. Our expenditures were $17,404,343. We had a net decrease in cash for the, or an increase in cash for the month of $33,119,135. And our balance at the end of the month is $59,929,197. A couple of items to note is we collected close to $57 million in general property taxes. Of that amount, $13.6 million is restricted for the building fund. We collected $2 million of property taxes from public service corporations, and a half million of that is restricted for the building fund. We also collected $530,000 in occupational license taxes. And as we're keeping an eye on this line item, and right now, we're not seeing a real significant impact on this, on this source of revenue due to the COVID situation. In general, the expenses are reflecting expected levels. They're a little bit higher this month, at this point compared to last year, and that is because there's an extra pay date that's been processed up to this time. We transferred $282,000 because of Ignite operational funds, and our debt service payments for the month were $1.6 million. I've provided the typical reports, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Ms. Shield? Okay, we have a recommendation of a motion, please. Motion in a second. Okay, any discussion or questions? Just a point of clarification, we get this information about a week in advance, so a lot of questions have been asked already of district staff, but is there anything tonight we need to cover off on? Okay, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion will carry. Okay, item six, recommended action old business. We do not have any old business tonight, so item seven, recommended action new business. Item A, amendment to the certified evaluation plan for the 2020-2021 school year. Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I recommend the board approve the amendment to the certified evaluation plan for the 2020-2021 school year as presented.
Okay, I have a motion, I'm sorry, I have a recommendation to have a motion, please. I have a motion by Mr. Fryman, a second by Ms. Pyle. Any questions on that? Or discussion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion will carry. Brings us to item B, formation of district COVID-19 board committee. Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I recommend the board approve the formation of the district COVID-19 board committee as presented.
Okay, we have a recommendation of a motion, please.
Some of.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion or questions on this?
Just one question. Formation of the committee, but just a question on naming it specifically COVID-19. Not that I wish ill will on us, but we've already been warned that there could be other new viruses out there potentially that could become threatening or other major issues that we would deal with aside from the current pandemic. Would it behoove us to maybe not limit the committee and expand its scope that it could be called in to tackle other issues of a major community-wide concern, other than just saying, oh, we can't do that because this is the COVID-19 committee? Just a thought.
That's a good point. What do you propose we call it? Just district health, or I don't know if we have to do that now, but.
District emergency response, or you know, I don't know. I didn't think that far ahead. I just, I kept looking all week long at the COVID-19 committee, and I want this thing to go away, and I was going to, but I just, I don't want to give it, I don't want to follow this committee in perpetuity, COVID-19, so.
Okay. So should we propose a new name now, or do you want to just rename it later?
Could rename it later, could change it then.
Yeah. Okay, we'll work on it. That's a good point, though. We wanted to carry forward into different challenges.
When is your next committee meeting?
Monday.
Maybe you could discuss that in committee and just brainstorm it there and see what, what sticks.
Okay, yeah, we'll do that. Let's go ahead, if everybody's comfortable, we'll go ahead and approve it since we have ongoing discussions. And I do, I do want to point out, you know, we're not just starting a committee from scratch. This is a continuation of work that's already been going on throughout the district, throughout the county. So it's a kind of a reconstitution and maybe a more formalized way for us to have discussion in the district, but it's really a continuation of the work that's been done. And I think if you've been following the work of districts around the state and around the country, we are seeing that you have to adjust continually. So this is our, I almost say minor adjustment on how we're handling COVID and how we're handling protocols and how we're handling decision-making. A set of doctors at Cincinnati Children's last week talked about how many of the re-entry plans and school reopening plans were developed in the summer before any students had stepped into a building. So we're finding that we have to continually reevaluate how we're making our decisions, and this, 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 this committee will help us do that. So just at a high level, it's a couple of board members, several folks from district leadership, a few principals, parent representation. So at a high level, that's, to catch everybody. I'm sorry, yeah, thank you. So teacher representation as well, as well as classified staff. Okay? Okay? Any other items on that piece? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion will carry.
I would also like to request that the committee take into consideration the points made tonight by our student board member.
Absolutely, yeah. And I think we're going to touch on some of that later, hopefully. I'd already asked Mr. McCarter to maybe speak to some of that, but we do appreciate Tony bringing that to our attention. Okay, item C, Boone County Board and Boone, Boone County Board and Boone County Education Association contract salary agreement 2020-2021 and 2021-2022. Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I recommend the board approve the Boone County Board and the Boone County Education Association contract salary agreement 2020-2021 and for 2021-2022 school year as presented.
Okay, thank you. We have a recommendation to have a motion, please.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions on that? Sorry? Okay, yes. Just a note of reference, this was ratified already by the BCA. Okay, seeing none, or hearing no discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Item D, certified substitute pay scale for classified hourly employees. Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I recommend the board approve the certified substitute pay scale for classified staff as presented.
Okay, I have a recommendation, can I get a motion, please? Motion in a second. Any questions on this? One thing I saw on it, Matt, and I meant to ask you earlier, I think it said classified could pick up certified, was this the one? Yeah. Pick up certified, but not until in the morning? Did I read that right? They can't pick them up at the evening before, is there, given the situation we're in, would it, would it behoove us to have flexibility or not?
I think that's to allow our sub pool of certified staff to be able to pick those jobs up, sometimes they do in the morning. What this allows us to do is bring in classified staff to fill in those roles and to compensate them more than they would be more appropriately as a certified substitute at that point in time.
Okay.
But with those classified employees, it helps them financially, but we do want to keep those positions open for our subs that are in our pool to be able to access that. So when that does for one in the morning, we would then go to those classified staff if we're not able to fill those roles.
Okay. Right, anything else? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Item E, translator job description and salary schedule. Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Ken, Mr. Chair. I recommend the board approve the translator job description and the salary schedule for the position as presented.
Okay, I have a recommendation, a motion, please. Motion in a second. Okay, any questions on this one, or comments? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Brings us to item eight, our superintendent's report. Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll start our superintendent's report this evening with Mr. Carter, our chief operating officer. He'll give us a report on the operations side of our organization, our school district.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Just wanted to go over briefly some things operationally. We are doing the best we can with bus routes throughout. We are doing the best we can with bus routes and running every day. Thank you, Jack. I'll start it. Thank you, Mr. Turner. I just want to give you an update on the operational side of the district. Our bus routes, we're doing the best we can every day to deliver kids to school. We are facing some shortages in our drivers as far as so much sick. And so we are, you know, trying to, we are experiencing some double rounds. We experienced some of that today and working with our schools, and probably will experience some of that tomorrow as well, but doing the best job we can. Lunches are being served every day, and I want to. Lunches are being served every day and I want to thank all the cafeteria workers for all the hard work they're putting into the, the school day and serving all the kids. The schools that I have visited, and I've visited quite a few, all of our protocols are being followed. The masking, I have not seen many issues at all with the mask. Hand washing, social distancing, doing the best of their ability in classrooms. The temperature taking, it's been a very smooth process when people go into the buildings and have the building when they function throughout the day. We are having a shortage in some of our custodial staff. We're probably addressing some of your issues at certain schools. We are working with the custodial crew and our clean team and even looking at some additional services to help us with that to address those issues. But this is something that we've been faced with over the last few days. I really would like to thank all the principals for all their hard work and planning in what we're doing as we started back full instruction this weekend, the hybrid schedule that we did before, and also the teachers and the work they're putting, being put into it. And I'd also like to recognize Mr. Mike Pori, who's the Assistant Superintendent for Operations for all his hard work. And then all of our directors. Bob Berry, Transportation Director, it's an endless job. Stephanie Caldwell for Food Service. Linda Shield with Finance and all the different things that has to go into what we're trying to accomplish. Dan Razor in Facilities that keeps on going. People don't really see the facilities guys, but they're behind the scenes making the operations work of the, of the district. And Marion Rankin, who is our Technology Director, who is vital at this time of the year and what we're trying to accomplish. So operationally, we're, we're doing the best we can. There are hiccups throughout the, you know, throughout the day, but we try to solve those as quickly as possible and, and keep the district moving forward.
You might have just the janitor issue, I think, that's brought up. And you might not know on top of your head, but is that probably a quarantine issue or?
I'm sorry, but I couldn't, was that, I'm sorry.
Specifically, yes, that's what.
She said, I talked during the, we already talked about it.
Yes. You already talked to him.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarter. Next, Dr. Jason Rattler will come up to give a report from the Strategic Support Services part of our organization.
Good evening, everyone. Just want to share a few things that we like, Mr. McCarter, so to really recognize our teachers, our school staff, our principals and how hard they're working. What we're seeing, observing in the classrooms, the schools that I've been in, our colleagues and our directors. Our teachers are just showing such great care and concern, compassion for our students, that positivity that our students need, really diligently working to meet the needs of our students going above and beyond outside the typical school day. Really just trying to meet their needs and recognize that in addition, such a focus on learning and with our quality standards that we've worked hard with in teaching and learning. On the teaching and learning side of our organization. And engaging our students and really focusing on a professional learning communities and teachers working together. It's been really, they've done a really, a really nice job with that. Certainly, we are, we can always improve. But when we can, everyone's working extremely hard. They can't work any, really any harder. So we really appreciate and recognize that. Virtual learning, I'll speak to that just for a moment. Focus, we're really focusing on improving our quality of that and our learning experiences. We've had lots of principal discussion at each level, elementary, middle and high school. We continue, we just had some of those meetings today. And we're really developing professional learning plan that we can engage our teachers and our school staffs in to address the needs of our students who are receiving virtual, who have chosen that option, specifically our special populations. The use of technology, engagement and differentiation. So we, and continue to, as Mr. McCarter alluded to, we have the same, same hiccups and issues on the teaching and learning side and continue to address those and be as proactive as we can.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Next, I wanted to ask Kathy Rubin to come forward. She's going to give us a report from the Student Services part of our organization.
Good evening. It's always a pleasure for me to talk with you all and to fill you in on what's going on in Student Services as well as across the district with some of the services that we provide. You heard Dr. Rattler talk about how hard the teachers are working, how hard the staff is, all the hours the staff is putting in. What I want to do is talk to you just a little bit about the mental health issues that we are seeing. And as staff, what we're providing in addition to what we have provided in the past. You can approve that we have an employee assistance program. In front of you, you have two handouts. One is from the American Fidelity Employee Assistance Program. And outlined on there is a way to help our employees navigate this crazy life that's going on right now. Any employee who has any feeling of anxiety, depression, any kind of mental health issues, work-related issues can access this and it is free to them. What they would do is they would call the number and they can access this current link service and that current link service will provide them access to mental health counselors or financial counselors, whatever they need. The second thing that we're providing is through our Kentucky Employee Health Program. And that is online, it's an online psychology and psychiatry program. Then again, our employees, any of our employees can access if they have our Boone County Insurance. So instead of going to a counselor, they can't do that. They could access this for up to three or four individual times online. We wanted to make sure that you knew about that. Our staff, yes, they're working very hard, but they're experiencing a lot of compassion fatigue, a lot of stress, a lot of weariness right now. I look at administrators who are becoming very, very proficient in logistics. That's different than what they do during our normal day or a normal year. So we wanted to make sure that they had this, this kind of assistance that could assist their families do. Our students, our counselors have asked for additional support for our students. So in, wanted you to know that at this point, we have several different outside agencies coming in, in addition to our counselors and school psychologists. We have North Key Behavior Health. We have Holly Hill, Bluegrass Behavior Health, Family Nurturing, Mebs, CHMK Behavior Health and Select Psychological. And because some of this is brief, we have Fernside that comes in and helps us with the, the brief counseling. It's so important that we recognize that the COVID issue causes trauma to every one of us, adults and children alike. And that in order for us to be successful, we must have self-care. Our counselors are reporting things like the inability to contact the students the way they need to because some of them are online, some of them aren't. The school psychologists are reporting that they're having trouble getting their assessments done, that kind of thing. We want to be able to provide them that extra support. Also, our school nurses, contact tracing is very simple in a normal year. You might have a case of Professor's or a case of chickenpox. Right now, COVID is taking over the contact tracing. It's very difficult. The health department's having difficulty contact tracing. When we receive a case from the health department, it's usually five, seven days, just because the logistics of that and that they vet every single case. So with the governor ordering us to, ordering parents to report to us, we're finding out these cases early. One positive case in our schools, whether it's staff or students, classes, a nurse or the team that's working with that nurse, 10 to 15 calls to find out who that student was with and to trace that through. They're making a lot of decisions that they're not used to, but Sarah Wolf is leading that very well. We do have 21 nurses. And at this point, we are looking at some process and procedures so that we can make that more efficient. Attendance team, Mike Ford leads our attendance team very well. Mike and Mark and Chris are working on participation rates as well as attendancy rates. Once they started working with the principals to look at the, whether they're writing those education plans, we increased our participation over almost 2%. So that's important. Participation and attendance does not equal achievement, but we're making sure we're getting contact to the students. If they've not been contacted, our fast team and our frisbees go out and make home visits and encourage the parents and see if they can reduce the barriers to that. So as we continue to work through all that we do, we want to let you know that we're doing whatever we can and we're surrounding staff and students, trying to make opportunities out of some of the humongous obstacles that we're having in our way at this point. So reducing barriers and meeting the basic needs. Thank you.
Any questions? With the work that she was just describing. And they are doing a job that is extremely difficult, extremely tedious and time-intensive with the contact tracing and the gathering of that data, the organization of that data, the reporting of that data. So that we can try to use that in making decisions for our school district. So certainly appreciate that, Mrs. Rubin. Thank you.
Excuse me, I do have one question for you, Kathy. How is it being communicated to the students to be able to get access to help? Is it? Okay, so that they need to reach out to the counselors, psychologists. There's not like, like with EAP, normally you can like call a number or something. Something that makes it very easy for them that they, that they're a little bit weary of.
EAP is for adults.
Right, right.
We still have our mental health hotline if they need it. We can spring that back up.
Okay.
We haven't had it at the very beginning of the year because the counselors are right there in the building. But that is something that we have talked about.
Okay. Thank you.
And sorry to our audience there, there was a big conversation going on. You may not have heard a question about our students that are receiving the instruction virtually, are they able to access some of the mental health resources and assistance that we provide to our students in person, to our schools? And the answer is yes. Some of that can be provided through telephone services so they can contact their home school. Even such that their counselors can provide schools to be able to use those resources. Thank you.
I've got a question too, and that kind of dovetails with our cool learning. I'm hearing from lots of my children's friends and parents that as parents look at, they've seen the free selection surveys. And that as parents start to begin to think about what will be our personal model for your family in January. I know we're still kind of, the best I ever can, Rattler, we're still looking at the most effective way to provide that in January and what platforms we might have available and when will families know how that will look going forward in January? I guess this is my question. I know those conversations are going on and it's not an easy question to answer right now, but is there a plan to disseminate that so the families know what it will look like when they select either A or B or so on and so forth?
Yes, that's a good question. So our, our plan is from the survey, planning survey that we sent out is to be able to use that information to help us craft and through planning. So the decision form will go out to parents next week. And so then we'll ask them to make a decision and have crafted what, what details about that virtual learning and what that option looks like as compared to our in-person model. So yes, we're in the midst of doing that right now.
So I guess my question is, will they have access to what that will look like before they decide? Or will they just decide one or the other and then we develop it around their selection? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
You mean to be able to front load that before they have a decision?
Do they have any idea what that would look like or is it, at this point, is it hard to judge numbers? I just didn't know.
Yes, so some of that is, really, we're in the, we're in the midst of planning, planning for that right now. So the survey will go out Tuesday and so they'll have next week to make that decision. So we're really wanting to front load that and then be able to articulate that to our parents so that they can make that informed decision about what virtual learning is and what it is not. So that, that's, in other words, that will be in part, part of the survey that should be spelled out for them. It will be spelled out for them as to what that looks like.
Thank you. And that is a very good question. And actually, that's one thing that our principals and schools spend a lot of time on. It's been significant work trying to plan out how to provide those services to students. Essentially, they're going to be creating probably a second master schedule for their schools for the second semester, which is a tremendous amount of work. I, I do want to, to talk just a little bit further about what Mrs. Rubin was discussing with our students and our staff. And, and I, I think our parents and probably all our community members as well. This is such a difficult time, a challenging time with this pandemic. And it's almost like there's an cumulative trauma that's been, that's just, it's being foisted upon everyone. And it's difficult for everyone. There's so many things that different people are dealing with and working through that it's extremely challenging. I think we, we always have to be thinking in a frame of mind of grace and forgiveness and understanding for each other because these are extremely difficult times and we don't know what other people are dealing with as we're working through these times. So I just wanted to say that. I do want to update the school board on our strategic leadership initiative. I formed a team of district leaders to begin the planning process to create conditions that will result in strategic reimaging of our district's vision, our mission, our goals to ensure that every student graduates from high school and that every student's globally competitive in moving forward, whether that's in the post-secondary education or in the workforce. We want to be sure that they're prepared for life in the 21st century. Our team has started by working with our superintendent's advisory council that was mentioned earlier, and also with community leaders and employers to create an atmosphere of inquiry to challenge our district to continually repurpose itself by building on our core values and our beliefs about what the future will look like and what's the vision to reach that. This work will build on the collaborative effort of creating a new strategic plan that will be completed next school year, the 2021-22 school year. So I just wanted to give you a quick update that that work is, is moving forward during this time. Next, I want to recognize Dr. Maria Brown. You may not know this, and this is her birthday. So I wanted to publicly recognize her, wish her a happy birthday.
Okay, we're, we're not planning very well. We were going to do that later, but Troy Fromm was going to lead us in singing Happy Birthday. So let's all, let's all mute and then.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to steal your thunder there. In, in closing, I want to say a few words. I want to thank our teachers. I want to thank our administrators, our classified staff for all their efforts and all their dedication in this year so far. They've, they've performed extremely well and they've worked extremely hard. In general, I think most people may not understand the time and the energy that our employees invest in their jobs. And, and they invest in our children in the community here. In the best of years, these jobs are difficult, they're challenging, they're physically exhausting. And yet they're the most rewarding jobs in the world as well. The past eight months of this pandemic have at times, at least for me, I think I can speak for a few others, these past eight months have seemed like about eight years. So it's been, been a challenge and I just want to recognize the work of, of our teachers, our administrators, our classified staff because they have done a tremendous job. And they, and all of us are exhausted, but they show up and they work and they do what they can do to help our students, to help each other. Our employees have just been incredible and I just want to be sure I recognize their efforts formally here tonight. That's all I have for my superintendent's report. Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Okay, thank you very much. So on behalf of the board, I want to echo what Mr. Turner said. I want to first thank Mr. Turner and Ms. Evans and the, and the whole staff that supports him. I want to thank Mr. McCarter, Dr. Pori and their entire operations team. I want to thank Mr. McCarter, Dr. Pori, and their entire operations team, Dr. Detwiler, Ms. Watson, Dr. Radford, the entire LSS and Learning Support Organization, Ms. Rupman and her entire team, you know, our principals as well, and certainly our teachers and our, our classified staff in the buildings. I've said several times, our, my board colleagues have said several times these last few months, we have really, really, really hard decisions to make, we do, and I feel very confident in the work we've done to make the decisions we've made, but we don't have to execute it every day. You all do, and that's, that's really, really hard. So I would say if ours is hard, yours is hard times three, and we, we recognize that. We've put a lot of time and effort into looking at every angle on this whole process. So we don't love where we are, but we feel like it's the best place to be right now, and we really appreciate the, the work that goes into it. And I wish we could do more and say more, but, but thank you. Any other comments before we move on? Okay, so that brings us to item nine, information proposals and communications. Any updates or things you want to share? I had Dr. Brown's birthday on this, so we've already done, we can do it again. Don't, don't you normally celebrate like twice on 21, 21st birthday?
I did a question, did we verify the calendar city meeting for Monday? I didn't hear back about that. Do you know?
Yes, yes, that is verified.
Okay, okay.
That is verified.
Thank you, Dr. Detwiler.
I had one fun update. So the Gray Gators, eighth grade girls volleyball team won their district, and they went 44-0 in three years. So 44-0, three straight championships, so that was a lot of fun for them. I know they were very thankful to, to be able to play, and so they had a great season.
Anything else? Okay, brings us to item 10, our audience of citizens. It looks like we do have one person that's signed up, Ms. Willis, Karen Willis, or Wills, I'm sorry, Wills. So just a quick statement on audience of citizens as you're walking over, audience of citizens is a time for the board to receive information, it's not a time to discuss or answer questions or debate a matter or core issues presented. We cannot legally, nor will we discuss any issue of specific employee or student. In respect to privacy, we do welcome your comments, we'll definitely listen and take notes. If you have a concern that you want us to follow up on, please give us your name and address, which we already have. So in order to make sure everyone's heard, we don't have a lot of people tonight, but we do like to keep it to two minutes, please.
The first question I have is for Mr. Turner. What's the specific advice have you received from Dr. Jerry Tolbert, the director of the Northern Kentucky Health Department? I am requesting that you confirm that he agrees with your opinion that returning students to full-time in the classroom is a good plan. I would also like to request a copy of data that supports the decision that it was safe to move on from a hybrid schedule. We hear a lot about data, but I'm sure you realize as a professional educator, it is always important to know the source. I have a little question or concern about some of the math I have seen in figures presented through letters from the board and from Mr. Turner. One of the measurements is per 100,000, and I believe Boone County is somewhere around 52 per 100,000. An important figure to be compared to that is the amount of COVID-19 students in the schools compared to the total number of people that work for the schools. If you take the 11, which I believe is the most recent number we have received, and you put that into approximately 23,500 people in the district, that figure comes out to 47 per 100,000. Those are comparable numbers. You can't take the 11, from my understanding of math, sometimes a little faulty, and put it into that 100,000, because we all know the school is a safe place to be, but unfortunately, we have no control over what the students and their families do when they are not in school, and they bring those things with them. How do we practice social distancing in a room with 28 students and adults? The Cincinnati Children's video that you sent us appears to be to emphasize the need for just such a distance. Why is the district not providing low-cost COVID-19 for faculty and staff to assure them that they are concerned they have access to that benefit? Mr. Turner, when was the last time you taught in a classroom for an entire day? I'm guessing 20 years. Since you became a principal the year I started teaching, and this is my 19th year, it's changed a lot in 20 years, as I have personally witnessed. Is the district proactively planning how to address students who have not succeeded these years and times, which are so very different, so that they can regain that lost instruction in the years ahead? That cannot be left to chance. We must begin preparing for that right now. We know as educators, it is happening. We want the students in our buildings. We want it done so that no student, staff, or faculty member dies. How many teachers, how many staff members, and how many students, and how many parents will be on the COVID-19 committee that you just discussed? How would, how does classified staff provide appropriate teaching with no training when they are asked to substitute? The hallmark of bringing them back was to provide them with high-quality education. That's not happening in a room with 28 or 30 students, covering, a teacher covering two different subjects because no substitute is available. It also doesn't happen when they're forced to put them into the gymnasium because there aren't enough teachers to cover their classes. Then, just like their friends at home, they're only getting virtual learning. Why wasn't PD available at the start of the year for teaching virtually? The support was needed and would have done much to make sure that all teachers were adhering to standards established by you and the school board for virtual learning. Unfortunately, I don't know of any teacher who has received college coursework or master's level coursework on how to effectively teach virtual learning, and I doubt there's very much research to it. We rely on you to provide that training for us. And lastly, how many students, staff, or faculty would you consider too many to die? If you don't know that number, you should, because it will be devastating to the teachers in that building, to the community, and to their parents. I look forward to hearing your answers.
Thank you.
How long should I anticipate that will be?
Thank you.
How long should I anticipate that will be, that I receive my answers? You said you would provide them, I just wanted to know when to look for them.
You said, what did you say last time?
You said that if I provided my address, that you would answer the questions that way, didn't you? Did I misunderstand?
Yeah, no, you did, I just didn't hear what you said.
How long should I anticipate before I receive that document?
You would please provide your questions in writing.
I will hand that to you in a moment.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to item 11. Does anyone else want to speak? Sorry. If you don't mind giving your name, just for the record. I'm sorry?
Eric Blunt.
Eric.
First thing, obviously, hearing that there was a shortage of payments and potentially police response, the necessary safety, I wonder what, Mr. Turner, you guys have done to notify the parents that would be, have their children in school during this time period that that shortage has occurred, and that they potentially could be at a higher risk for exposure. Second thing, we had a promise that we were supposed to be having a virtual teacher assigned to us for the whole year. That, when you went to your four-day plan, changed, and our virtual teacher was taken away to provide in-class teaching and assignment, and was assigned to a new teacher halfway through the semester. I find that to be highly unacceptable. We would like to understand why the change, and why you guys changed your decision to the commitment that you had made to us. And I'm sure there's a lot of other teachers, parents probably in the same boat that would like to have that expressed and explained to them on why that commitment had changed. And that's the only two concerns I have. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, that brings us to item 11, closed executive session, which we have none. Item 12 adjourned. Can I get a motion, please?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, hearing none? We are adjourned, thank you very much.
I always lose it.
I have a call to order, the Finance Corporation, Boone County Board of Education, November 12th, 2020. And just item two, audience of citizens. We have to run a finance meeting, so. Looks like we have none. Item three, approval of minutes and financial statements, Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. I recommend the board approve the corporation's meeting minutes of October 8, 2020, and the financial statements as presented.
Okay, I have a recommendation, I have a motion, please. We have a motion in a second. Any questions or discussions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion will carry. Item four adjournment, can I get a motion to adjourn, please? Motion.